Good morning, everybody. It's Michelle Reese Johnson. I hope you all had a fabulous summer. We've been not so active lately due to summertime fun. But we're so glad you joined us today because we're really excited about our new business partner website. And the fact that you're all here today to learn more about it is incredible. So thank you for being here because we want to encourage you guys to utilize our, the tools that we have that are amazing for you to talk about estate planning to your clients. There are so many resources that we want to share with you. But first, I wanted to introduce a couple people. The first one is Scott Pringle, and he is going to be walking you through their website because this is his baby. Very hard on this with other, other people, but we're excited that he can present to you on some tools that we want you to know about. And also what's important is our new business partner agent assistant, which is Amanda May. She's right here, and I'd like to introduce Amanda. She is going to be so helpful to John and I because as you know, if you guys have clients, you're sitting in front of a client and you need answers quickly. And John and Michelle are on the phone all the time. Amanda's going to be your girl. So we want you to get to know Amanda. You're gonna love her. She's been with AmeriState for five years. As a client account manager. So she's so familiar with Ameri- estate planning and she's passionate like we are because when she came to AmeriState, her own grandparents went through a probate situation and it kind of ripped her family apart. So she's very, very passionate about helping people get their estate plans in order. We're not going to be taking any questions, live questions, but if you have any questions, please put your questions in the the box. What does Caroline call that?
Chat.
The chat box. And then we are going to get back to your questions probably after the weather. So in the meantime, I would like to hand it over to Scott. And he's going to walk you through this so you are familiar with how to utilize the, the site and get access to the resources you need. Okay, Scott, take it away.
Wonderful. Thank you, Michelle. Hello, everyone. Yes, this has been a long time coming. We've rolled out AmeriState.biz many, many years ago. And it served us well. We kept adding more stuff and it became a little bit, where does exactly everything go? And we had plans of adding more functions and features. And because of what it was built on in the past, we kind of hit roadblocks. So we did a complete rewrite from the ground up. And that is what we're here to present. So let me share my screen here. Ba 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 ba. Share my screen. Share my screen and go. All right. So if, if someone, if you just put like chat, if you put like the number one or something in chat, so let me know. You can see my screen. Okay, that would be helpful. Make sure I'm not blasting out to nobody. So can Michelle and Amanda, can you see my screen? Okay?
You can.
Okay, great. So here it is, AmeriState.biz. This is your business partner portal. So there are many parts of it that are available to the public. And where it will be optimized to try to help drive traffic for more agents. But then there are many, many protected areas in it as well. So right now I am logged in. Here, let me just log out. So here we are. So this is the unprotected phase right here. So this is a really helpful video that carried over from the other one showing about, have you asked the question, featuring some stuff? Explanations about why to become a partner. Just kind of things to help get you going. There's always buttons to be able to contact us. To, we explain more about our business and features, and you can always talk to us and get signed up. So some other areas here, this is about the toolkit, which is kind of the cornerstone of the partners. This is where we have, it's a conglomeration of tools that we add templates, flyers. Here we go. Webinars, we have a webinar toolkit for you to kind of host your own webinar. If you don't want to do it yourself, we have a pre-recorded one you have access to. Caroline, our marketing director, has been really hard at creating some nice scripts that can, are optimized for email or text or voice, voicemails, you know, cold calling or, you know, customer service calling. As well as some ideas about what to talk about and videos. And this is always expanding. We're going to be adding a lot more as time goes on. And I'll give some insight to the roadmap closer to the ending of this. But let's kind of dive into some of the protected areas. So the, if you, or if you're new to it, you'll want to sign up here and give us your information. And then when you hit submit, we'll get the information on you're not approved automatically. We will reach out to you, verify it is, because these are all very valuable resources that that we just want to check things out with you first, new prospects, and then you'll be authorized to let in. And then the, the, you'll have access to the stuff here. So let's go. I'll just log in myself. Now mine's going to be a little bit different than yours. Just ignore that because I'm an administrator and I don't have my normal user login memorized like I do this. So you won't see this black bar up at the top. But what you will notice is this has changed into kind of your specific functions to perform here. So the, one of the most obvious ones and the ones we would love you to use the most is submit your, your case. So most partners are on a referral basis, and then we have other levels. That's something for John and Michelle for you to talk about. But basically, this is allows us to be able to, to you to be able to share your, someone who's interested in estate plan with us, and then we'll reach out. And we'll talk to them and be your ambassador for them. If we ever need your help and assist with anything, we have it set up in our software so we can send, as we make notes to the client that you gave us. Then we will send notifications out to you with the updates, the status. But it all starts with putting the information in here and sharing that. So when you do submit it, you'll get an email receiving all of the information that you submitted, and we will also get an email. This is the important part about using the form instead of just emailing this information. It's all gets data based. And then it'll, we'll be able to do many more powerful things about it that way. Also, it'll be automatically disseminated out to multiple people to make sure responsiveness happens. Because we value all the referrals that you give us and make sure of prompt, accurate and, and helpful information for them because we're representing you. And so we want to be that. And this forum is the tool that helps us the most. So when you do submit the cases, then you can also view all your cases. Now, there's three levels of viewing. So when I click on this, you're going to see all the cases that have been submitted over time because I'm an administrator. But when you click on it, you'll see only the cases that you have submitted. We also have a few sales groups. Teams of agents working under one company. And if you happen to be one of the leaders for those sales groups, then when you view the cases, you'll be able to see all of the ones that were submitted by your group, by your business, by your company. So those are the three levels. So don't freak out when you see this one with mine because it's, there's a whole lot. So, and these are the data columns that we'll see. So the date it was submitted, the name, the you're the, the agent who submitted it, the advisor, the client's first name, last name, mobile number, I mean, phone number, email. And you can actually edit the entry too, if there was some changes that needed to be made, like if there was a misspelling or something. You know, if there was a hyphenated name or something like that, you could update it and then that would come to us. So you were able to manage it that way. I'm going to hit cancel because I don't really want to change this real lead right here. So this is a big part of the roadmap too, is right now, this is just one direction. It's just input it and it comes here. So this is a great record for you to see what you've submitted. However, over time, what we're going to do is as we work the leads back into the system, we will actually have updates to the stages. Right now, we send a weekly report to all our advisors, letting them know the inventory of what we have on file for them that's open and being worked on with the latest, greatest. But that, but by putting the information, submitting the cases into the portal, I'll be able to write back the stages and updates. So you could get like within a day, real time updates of your status cases. That's kind of the big roadmap that we have viewing down there. So that's where this whole submit a case and view the case portion is. Also, once you get into the logged in area, you've got these your port, your, your own, the agent navigation here. So here's where you can change your information about yourself. Okay. And you can also change your password. If you forget your password, there's a forget password link and it'll email it to you kind of status quo. So that is important. We, we saw the submit case button up here. We saw the view cases. And then this is, and this is an evolving part in, in the new enhancement to the old site. Now we're having a document library where you're able to search and filter and sort by stuff. So say, for example, I need my email scripts. So boom, here's my agent email communications and it pulled up email because that's in voicemail is in there. So if, then if you wanted to see it, you can just download it and save it. And let's open it. And so these are all basically PDFs, Word docs. There's some videos in here. I'm sorry, I'm a coder. That's why you see all this type of stuff right here. But these are the scripts that you can literally just, you know, copy and paste into your Outlook, into your corporate email, a client and send out with your own email footers. This is, you, this is a really good method to do it this way because the plain text, you know, kind of non-newsletter-y ones, they actually have higher open rates than the newsletter we want. It's not that there isn't a place for newsletters. If you have that on your side, you can use some of our copy content to add into your newsletters to make them aware about newsletters, but for one-to-one communications or to blast this out to your database, this is a really useful script. So what I'm basically trying to highlight here is here's document library. We're able to search for things here. These are kind of the categories of items I have in here. So we have agreements between, those are the agreements for, between the customer and the AmeriState, like the legal plan and the state planning agreement. We have applications to fill out for submitting new people, the brochure for you to use, client, different client communications, marketing training and videos. So this is our library right now. It's ever growing. And there are also some links to get into it. I'd also like to highlight, we have Spanish speaking ones too. So here's our Spanish information right here. So we have some Spanish scripts and Spanish flyers for our bilingual clients. We find that's actually a very good niche for people who are in that industry. You wind up having a lot less competition and you can really separate yourself. Oh, thank you for the like. And let's see here. That's really kind of the high roads. And this is again, kind of the beginning. Again, the roadmap that I foresee and is we're putting out new marketing materials for you. New into the document library. We'll have new training videos that come out continuously. We have a blog that where we're going to be posting more information to, we're going to be adding a webinar section to this where you can see recordings from like today in the past. And again, not all these are going to be publicly available. You have to have a login to be able to get to this. This will be gated. Some are, some aren't, depending on the material. And I don't know, Michelle, any high roads? Anything I missed you can think of?
Um, no, but we're going to be adding video, more videos and more videos. We want you guys to be comfortable about how, like for some of the business partners, they actually take the applications and we have videos on there how to do that. So as we go, as we add more videos, we'll let you guys know about them. Because there's so much to learn, but, and we just wanted to make sure that you guys feel comfortable. And that's why we're spending a lot of time on resources for you. And this website is going to help us grow in that area. So you guys don't have to you know, feel like, oh, I don't want to talk about estate planning because I don't know what to say or things like that. So I think that's really it for me.
Okay. So it's just all about trying to provide really helpful, valuable materials for you to promote estate planning as a part of your business model. So that you can be more comprehensively serving your customers and, and helping your prospecting. Maybe another item for your, that can, that can be your foot in the door. Because everyone needs an estate plan, pretty much, who's married, kids, owns a home, etc. I'm, I'm sure I'm preaching to the choir here.
Right. Um, I just wanted to take mention, there's several different, different types of, of agents or business partners on this webinar right now. And so for those of you who actually take applications with your clients because you like to be a little more hands-on. This isn't the place where you're going to submit your apps yet. You're still going to do it the same way at apps@AmeriState.com. The submit a client is just strictly for referring agents who want to refer their clients to us. And we take it, the lead from there and our trust advisors, Cassie and Florence, reach out to your clients. And Virginia is the one who actually does the first call to your clients to set up an appointment with our trust advisor. So we have a little bit of a process there. But so this is kind of more for the submitting, the client is for our refer partners only. Now, if you were on the full circle where you take the app and you deliver it yourself, or if you just take the application and we assist with the delivering. You would, all the tools are here for you to get your applications, to get your legal plan agreements, your state planning agreements, how to fill them out. For you to market to those people, but this is not where you submit your apps. But you will always find everything you need and the tools that you need to sell sell in the state plan or whatever else you're doing. It could be an LLC of corporation. It could be just powers of attorney. We have an app in there that, if all you need is a power of attorney, there's an application or just a power of attorney. You don't need to fill out five pages. So, but that's going to be in phase two because we want this portal eventually to be everywhere that you need to go to submit your applications when you take them. And then you'll be able to upload maybe an existing trust or other documents you want us to have. But that's going to be in phase two. So continue doing what you're doing to apps@AmeriState.com.
Yeah, thank you for reminding me that because yeah, that is, the submit a cases for just the straight referrals. And for the more involved ones, we'll have a much more involved forum for them to do that. And the beautiful part about the forum is when they will fill out the form online, it will wind up spitting out the PDF in the app that they would normally handwrite in or hand type into. And there's a lot of logic built into the form, which actually will make it faster than doing it old school. And then it gives us the ability to give you more real time updates too. So there's the incentive there.
Right. And Amanda, can you type in your email address and phone number? Because they're already asking, how do we get ahold of Amanda?
Yeah.
Go ahead and do that. Also, a couple of other things I did want to mention is be sure to sign up for our newsletter to get dates of upcoming webinars and marketing materials. So do that. Also, follow us on LinkedIn. You can share our posts with your clients and followers. That's a really good resource for you. And another good thing to do is add estate planning services to your website. We can help you with the language and give you things that, tools that you need to put on your website. That's huge. So remember to do all those things. Yeah, call, either call Amanda if you need help with that, or Caroline at AmeriState, our lovely marketing director. Love Caroline. But John and I are always here too. When you guys have those tough cases that you don't know what the heck to do it. You know, we're, I'm really seasoned in that, as you know. So I'm happy to help you get to that point where you feel comfortable and taking an application. John's pretty good at it too, but I've been doing this for 20, 24 years. And just have a lot of knowledge and experience on some of those tougher cases and clients. We are going to be doing a formal announcement with Amanda and we're going to give you all her contact information. When are we going to do that, Caroline?
Next week.
Next week. We're a little behind the gun, but isn't Amanda, you're going to love working with Amanda. She's so efficient. She loves talking to you guys. She's so familiar with the process because that's what she's been doing for five years at AmeriState. So she is a wealth of knowledge and help for you guys. When John and I can't be available, we want you to be able to get immediate access to your questions.
I wanted to add, she was also worked in customer service for our member services for a long time too. So she's worked on both sides. And so I can't think of anyone more well qualified.
Thank you. Thank you. I've had a fun journey with AmeriState. Want to mention that the direct line that I put in there does have texting capabilities. So if you want to send me a quick text, if that's a quicker way to get ahold of me, please feel free to do that as well. I'm very excited to work with everybody. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me? This is Joan.
Hi, John.
Hi.
Hi. Sorry, my, my, my video isn't working. So I had to log in through Amanda's link. So I appreciate that Amanda's sharing that with me. Scott, thank you so much for all you did on this website and everyone else, marketing Caroline. You know, everyone that chipped in, it looks great. I'm so excited to be able to utilize this with our business partners. And I wanted to just mention that the, the business partner website, you know, has, has multiple levels depending on where our business partners are with their experience with estate planning and where they are with AmeriState. So it can be used for entry level. You're just joining us. You, you know, you're, you're a new strategic business partner. And we're here to help you advance in your estate planning knowledge and the process and learn how to work with your clients and AmeriState. As well as, excuse me, as well as for the advanced business partners that we work with, where they're, you know, seasoned and they understand the estate planning. They might be doing seminars, webinars, you know, the, the material that we provide covers that whole broad base of professionals that we partner with. And as Michelle has mentioned, you know, we really want to be able to be here for our business partners. So you have the confidence that we are, you know, you're down the hall, back office, estate planning resource for your clients' needs. So there's so much in there and our staff, you know, we're really here to support your efforts. And the business partner website is, is just the beginning of lots of ways we can do that.
Yes. So we look forward to sharing with you our announcement for Amanda. And also just keeping you updated on, on things you need to know. There's a lot of buzz going around about Prop 19. If you're a California agent, we're going to be focusing on some great information you need to know about deeds and when people are on title to property with their kids and then yeah, there's, we have to be really, really careful and taking people on and off title to properties these days if you're in California because you could get a tax reassessment. And so you need to be really, really in close contact with us if you see those things come up. Okay. But we're going to be talking about that in October. And also we'll have a few more webinars coming up. But we're going to be doing town hall meetings twice a month and to help keep you guys informed and educated. And if there's some interesting things we want to share with you, just keep it, you know, keep in touch with us and check out the emails and the texts that we send you so you can stay informed. And if you're going to make this a big part of your practice. Because let's face it, your clients need this and you're going to get clients because you can offer this. So it's a great resource for you and we just want to help you be better at what you're already doing and add this on to your services that you already provide. So thank you for being with us today. We really appreciate, appreciate your business and your trust that you've placed in this. And the time you spent with us today. And Scott, you have something else?
Yeah, if I may, I just see a couple of questions and answers and I don't get a chance to pop on these too often. So if anyone has any questions, it's kind of like regarding the website right now, I go ahead and put them in the questions and answer section right now. And I just want to say, Jamie, thank you for the comment. I appreciate that. I hope you enjoy that. Leslie, yep, we're looking for phase two also. It's going to be real exciting, especially the bidirectional data exchange between what's happening in the customer database and what you can see on the website. So that's always been kind of my personal holy grail for doing this. So then now that I have the new site, the new platform, it's going to be doable soon. So most likely it'll, that'll be quarter one of next year. Because I have something big for quarter four differently. So anyways.
I was, I thought I was typing into Claudia's comment, but I guess I clicked enter and now I can't retype. So.
That's okay. So I see your information, Claudia. Oh, the thing about the transition to the new website, all your usernames are still there. Same user password. All your client submissions from the past are still there. So you don't have to redo anything. If you've been submitting it in another way, then that's, we're not cutting that off right now. But I'm just now with the new platform and how it's going to be growing. I really, really highly encourage and we want to incentivize people to please submit the referrals through the website because it just gives, you get better visibility and we get better tracking and we're able to provide better service to those leads. So it's kind of a, a win-win overall. So I know it's another site, another login, blah, blah, blah. But it, it, but there are, there are rewards for it. There's value behind it. And, and you're welcome, Tom. Thank you as well. And so let me see if there's anything else while I go through here.
If I can, if I can jump in and encourage, encourage with our existing business partners, they're, they're familiar with receiving our Thursday night pipeline and status reports. So keep, you know, for those that have referred folks over and they've gotten started, keep an eye out for your, your Thursday PM pipeline and status reports. Check your spam folder and, and see if maybe it didn't, the first one or two didn't end up in there. But also you can also be on the lookout for some individual emails and updates coming from usually Virginia in relationship to, in regards to her efforts to connect with your referred clients. There's times where we kind of struggle with connecting with clients and we reach out to the agent or we're sending updates. So keep an eye out for some of those, you know, quick messages coming from Virginia in regards to some of the referrals you've sent over. We want to make sure that our business partners are kept in the loop. They know we're making an effort to connect with their referred clients. And, and there's times where, you know, the timing isn't right. This, that, or the other, or we were asking for the agents, you know, maybe follow up to encourage a client to, you know, connect with us. So so there's lots of ways we're pushing information out to you folks. And those updates on the referred clients are super important. So try to keep an eye out for those for us if you would.
And one more thing, if, if you're having IT problems, I think Cindy Klima, you had mentioned to me that you couldn't get access. So Scott, where should they, who should they reach out to on the business partner website if they're having issues?
You? I would say, yeah, me, I'll reach out to any one of us and ultimately it will filter down to me. I am Scott@AmeriState.com. I will put this in the text. So you'll have this. And that's a good way to do it.
Yeah, maybe you can talk to Cindy and walk her through personally, Scott, too.
Sure. So Jerry, yes, the site is active now. It's completely done. So it's further along than the old one was. So it's live. And Claudia says that she doesn't see all her clients. I will say that when reviewing it with the hundreds of agents and cases that have been submitted, I did see how some of the data is not quite. of the data is not quite right because sometimes John would submit things on your behalf and that would kind of throw a monkey wrench because it wouldn't show up under your user anymore. So we we understand that. And if you do have a case like that, just bring it to our attention and we will clean it up on the backend and get things right. So there's a little bit of data cleanup when that comes with the remodeling. You make a little dust and so there's a little cleanup. So just bring it to our attention and we'll take care of it. And should you add all your old ones in there? I would say no, just from this point forward, move on with your new cases. I think that's the best way to go. So anything else here? So Amanda, Brenda said, thank you. And you're welcome, Claudia, as well. So that's all I got. If anyone has anything, they can submit something real quick. I'll give you guys a few minutes in case something else pops up, but otherwise I don't have anything else at this moment.
Okay, well, we're right on time, ten thirty-one. And you guys have a great day and we look forward to seeing those referrals and applications and buzz and business going on. We're excited. We're going towards, you know, the holidays, summer's over. Let's just rock and roll it because we know what happens when the holidays come. So grab those clients right now. Some of them are finishing up their taxes. Great time to get them, you know, get this off your client's bucket list. They've probably talked about wanting to do this year and now is the time. This month, September, October and beginning of November are great months to talk about estate planning. So go for it. Use our tools and resources. Reach out to Amanda, me and John. How can we help you? You know, get more business. And also, we have some promotions going on. I think it was for the refer partners, if you sell three trusts by the end of September, you get like a free one for yourself. So don't forget about that. Four or five hundred dollars. So if you're at two, push for that third one. And we'll see it come in and we'll let you know. So go for it. You have a couple more weeks and we appreciate your time.
Alright.
Everybody.
Thank you, everybody.